To the Pledge Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thanks for coming, everybody. Beautiful weekend. Roll call vote, please. Yeah, that too.
Sandy Kufa.
Getting ready.
Here. Crystal Reagan.
Here.
Kristi Hilton.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, present. Joanne Shurkey.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Okay, all here and present and counting four. First thing we have is a public hearing for our proposed 2017-18 budget. I'll entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing for the 2017-2018 budget.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, let the record show it, 7:03. This time I open up a public hearing for anything concerning our proposed budget. Does anyone have anything to say about our proposed budget? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion. Oh, do you have?
I would just like to know if you have public comment to the public.
Yes, yes, that's, yes. That will be coming up soon. Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for our 2017-18 budget.
A motion to close the public hearing for the 2017-18 budget.
Support. Okay, we have motion and support. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have bills payable.
7:03 and a half.
Yeah, 7:04. Entertain a motion for our bills payable. Doesn't anyone want to pay any bills this week?
I will make a motion to pay bills payable in the amount of $139,808.17.
Thank you. We have a motion.
Support.
And support. Okay, we have a motion and support. Is there any discussion, questions, or anything on our bills payable? Hearing none.
Roll call.
Yeah, roll call vote, please. That's what it is.
Crystal Reagan.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shurkey.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufa.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Now we have public comments. Anyone want to get up and speak about anything their heart, well, almost anything their hearts content?
We are the, my name is Estelle Wallace, and I live at 10371 St. John Drive. We have recently found out about a change in a 40-foot setback from the seawall inland along the North Channel. Why this will not work is we happen irregular shoreline. Each of those properties vary from the Sassy Canal to the Old Lyles Canal by the Old Man's House. We don't feel it's fair that we bought property for unobstructed views over the years. We took our homes, and then one new home to the master plan comes in, and all this changes. We had no idea that these were changing until they took place. And then we lost our unobstructed views. We now have six-foot aridides that are blocking one, two, three houses to the west, and one, two, three, four, five houses to the east. I brought a picture because St. John Drive has a history. The Walton Salt Factory was there. The house where it ended is right there. We have three property owners that were the original residents of the road from the 1920s. We have four or five that have been there for 80 years. We let the one new house go up. We knew it was going to be big. We didn't object to the house. But when they blocked our views, then we all got upset. So we did get from the Department, we wanted to show a diagram of this, and we also wanted to make a statement. Like any general in charge, whether it be the Army, Navy, Air Force, or Marines, or a CEO of a company, you have to investigate the past to plan future maneuvers. The township supervisor has to understand past history. What works, what doesn't. Like King's IGA went under duty Farmer Jack. Let's talk history. Like your website says, "The history of Clay Township," named so because of a clay foundation, four feet down that does not hold water. Seawalls hold water. But it is still there under all the homes' foundations. I would also like to mention, besides the website, this township honors veterans with bricks in the park. The museum shows what the town looked like, mementos. I now will present the history of St. John's Drive. History going back to the 1800s, starting with the Walton Factory, where the original entrance was off M-29 where the Sassy entrance is. The road is gone because Tom Phillips dug it out to dredge for his Tom Phillips Homes. There was a pickup on the other side and ended again behind Diane and Garvey's. But they had bought a Tom Phillips home, and then it got dredged. St. John is an island with the Sassy Canal on one side, the Old Lyles Canal on the other side, and now to Tom Phillips putting the canal on the backside, we facing North Channel. If our road went out, there'd be no access to St. John Drive. In the 1920s, we had the first three residents at 10401, 10405, 10409. A son and two grandkids still own it, and it will be passed on. In 1937, my dad came along with Johnny Leek on Mr. Horn from the veneers. He convinced my dad to put a dollar down and purchase a piece of land. I have the 1937 deed. The setback back then was 125 feet. In order to go forward, you have to look at the past, and instead of preserving it, you are destroying it for your master plan, and a man-made disaster will be the township's master plan. With all that clay holding the heavy weight of brick homes, you will have problems. Who wants to buy property with no views? That is the number-one reason why people buy on the waterfront. Your 40-foot setback and this landscaping plan have just killed the views, and the lots that vary in size were never investigated. Nobody measured. If they did, they'd find out not everyone has that 40 feet on the end lots. The seawalls are curved slightly, so no one noticed that at 10215, the seawall goes out a good 80 feet. The guy next door does not have enough room of that 40 feet. That house would be past the seawall. When the state replaced the old wooden bridge on St. John Drive, we paid $5 in the spring, $5 in the fall to regrade the road with gravel. It was perfect for the sewers. We saved the township money with all the gravel that was graded in from the past 30 years. The outhouses we had from the 1920s to 1965 were treated with lye to reduce the waste poop. In 1937, photo, you also noticed there's a garage. In 1958, it still shows the property with the same garage. That began as cottages, and in later years, the homes. Want to show you. Why we were named Pearl Beach was because of the leftover salt on the beach of sand and the clay foundation. That's why we were known as Pearl Beach. But we had no beaches in the township. We had our own post office still standing across from Johnny Leek, as people washed in the North Channel. Despite all, we accepted the new home. But the 40-foot ruling and the landscaping just ruined the unobstructed views that we have had forever. This 40-foot ruling will cause a leapfrog effect on an irregular shoreline of North Channel, and St. John is not a straight road. It begins with canal homes before it opens up to the North Channel. If it made this ruling motion and does not know the history of the land to have been investigated by measuring all the waterfront homes. There are 63 of them. Therefore, it is biased and prejudicial to one new home that changed ordinances and made all these amendments to accommodate this new build. In my diagram, having the property before I was born. I know how ridiculous this is, and your future master plan has already caused upset because they bought for the views. If the houses are not kept even for those panoramic views, as one person told us, the view is straight ahead. We're not horses with blinders. We have lived here longer. Some of us have had land for 90 years. We pay taxes, we vote in elections like we are nothing, and no notification of any changes in these ordinances or amendments. We want to know why. Why one new home bill changed what we thought would give us the views only to have it taken away. This motion for landscaping, the motion said, "Therefore, they." Who are "they"? St. John Drive, we want this township to have these new builds. Well, if they're going to obstruct the views, nobody's going to live there. We don't care about the house. Now a fence is threatened along the whole property line under construction. Under the Constitution of the United States, the Tenth Amendment gives us the rights on property, namely, the 40-foot rule in motion that passed this landscaping was biased prejudicial. We want our views back. Make the new neighbors play nice with the other 63 waterfront homes. Now one of them have landscaping that blocks the view. What happened to the three foot for rear yards? It's gone. I just looked it up, it's six feet now. Our aridides are going to grow up to 30 feet. It starts at six. We, the current residents, never received any notices of this changing. What we have enjoyed for years and years, the best memories of growing up, we are looking to the township supervisor to come out and see for himself the discrepancies in this 40-foot setback and the landscaping taken to the extreme. Why does one new home change ordinances and all these amendments? We feel it is biased and prejudiced. We ask the board to investigate and not sweep it under the rug. Views are what sell, and this township just cut off your noses despite your faces. You ruined the number-one seller to waterfront property, the views. If you keep the houses even with unobstructed views, there will be a future. Would you buy a waterfront home that you have to go to the seawall or at the end of the dock? I doubt it. Keep the views, or you lose. The Tenth Amendment of the Constitution gives us the right to fight for our property rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for coming in, and I know this is public comments, but I can address some of your situations now. You asked why or how it happened. And this is under the zoning ordinance, and that's really controlled 100% by the Planning Commission. And how, the process to change our ordinance, our Planning Commission ordinance, it goes through the Planning Commission. They have public notices, public meetings on it, and then they vote on the.
What notices? We never saw.
It was in the paper.
We don't get the paper.
Well, I'm sorry, but this is legal. Let me explain. I have a solution. I think I have a solution for you. But right now, I'm addressing how it happened, because you asked that. So anyhow, there is state laws that in court, and one of the cases was actually in St. Clair County, basically said, "Your front view is straight ahead." And under our current ordinance was you had a 45-degree view. That would not have held up in court. So the Planning Commission looked at that, said, "We have to change it." And this is, I, and this is what I think the interpretation of the court was. You're allowing property owner A to control property owner B property because of the 45, and maybe, you know, a couple lanes on each side. So that's why the State of Michigan and the courts, they said, "We're not going to allow this guy to control this guy's property." That was the logic, I believe, behind the ruling. And so the zoning board, they changed it to adhere to the state law. Your view is straight out in front. Solution. Solution. Okay. I'm not sure, I'm not, I can't guarantee this will happen or not. I'm recommending to you, and I'll send a letter to our planner. Right now, you have a 40-foot setback rule from the seawall back to, towards the front of your property. Nothing can be 40 feet. Go to them, figure out what you want it to be. Go to them and tell them that you would like that extended to whatever, 60 feet or 55 feet. I'm not sure. That would accomplish the same thing and keep the present ordinance intact. You follow me?
There should be no setback. Keep it even with what's already existing.
This is, please, this, I'm giving you a recommendation. If you extend the setback larger, so they can't build closer to the seawall. That's what I'm saying. Go to the Planning Commission, tell the, but you got to figure out what you want. We have some areas, the setback from the house to, or the property from the seawall up is only 30 feet. Most of them are 40 feet. We have some areas that's 55 feet. Depends on where you live. Request the Planning Commission to give you a larger backyard setback from the seawall towards the house, required setback. And that would solve what you're asking without making a big thing, changing all the ordinances.
How do we get on the agenda for this?
Right. Send a letter to me and address to the Planning Commission, and I will give it to them.
Okay. I also have something for the board.
Y'all have to come up. Public comments.
Thank you. My name is Vicki Presley. I live at St. John Drive. But I understand what you're saying with the setback.
Right.
But what she said last week in the other meeting, "Some houses from the seawall to their house are only 30 feet. Others are 80, some are 65, some are..."
And on St. John's Drive, it's 40 feet.
Okay.
Ask them to make a larger rear.
Like 70 or 80 feet?
Whatever it would, I mean.
One of the houses.
Right.
Yeah. Because some are different, like, you know.
Right.
I knew, now I was one of the houses when a new house went up, that they were told they had to give me the 45-degree angle.
Right.
And they did.
Right.
Their situation's a little bit different.
But the law changed because of.
The next year, I think it changed.
Because of situations happen in the courts.
Okay. And that's why that.
Right, and that's, that's why it got changed. And, but I think the solution is ask for a larger rear yard setback.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more public comments?
Just want to give you complaints for whoever gets some zoning board.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Herman Hook. I own 10431 St. John Drive. I'm just trying to get some clarity on this 40-foot setback. Is the 40-foot setback stating you can build to 40 feet, or the landscaping goes to 40 feet?
You can build to 40 feet. And if you can build a house, you can put up landscaping.
When did this go into effect?
Like I'm saying, when the ordinance got changed, I don't, I'm not sure exactly when the Planning Commission did. Two or three years ago. That's when it changed. So.
This is just hard to believe.
So like I say, go to the Planning Commission, ask them you want your setback, your rear setback extended.
And the landscaping. We want that.
Well, that, that would be, you know.
Yeah, whatever the setback is. You know, because like I was explaining at the last meeting, I have a.
At the Planning Commission?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, I was saying. I have an old cottage to the left side of me. It's going to get tore down sooner or later.
Right.
I have a vacant house for the last seven years that I've been trying to get the township to do something with, but I'm sure their hands are tied.
So kind of get together, see what you think, how many footage you're talking about.
In my, in my circumstance, I'm 120 feet.
Right.
From it. But you look right down the line, and everybody's in line.
Right.
Everybody's in line. That's what we want.
Right.
We want everybody to stay in line.
You know, you can ask them that. I mean, it's a Planning Commission issue.
I understand now.
We can't even create the ordinance here.
Sure. I understand now. So we're still going to the wrong meeting. We should be at the Planning Commission.
Well, no, but I'm giving you a, this is what I would do.
Well, you've given us much more information than last Wednesday. Last Wednesday was, "We don't know, I don't know, I can't answer that."
Right.
It wasn't a question answered. At least you're giving us direction.
Right.
So.
So that's, that's what I would do. So.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay.
Yeah, I'm Jim Klein. I live at 10385 St. John's Drive. This is not my primary residence. I bought this for the view. I bought this so I have a place to go and relax. I have industrial property in Warren and property in Troy. This was just my getaway, as of it is. Now I have nothing. I bought this property thinking that the city of Clay Township would protect my investment. It depreciated my investment, because nobody's going to buy the property with binders on to look forward. I talked to some other communities up and down M-29. They said that rule that you set from the State of Michigan don't apply because the State of Michigan has to have a right of way for it to apply. There is no right of way on St. John's Drive owned by the State of Michigan. It's the city itself that controls it. If there is this 40-foot setback, and now that you can have shrubbery 12 feet high, where it used to be three feet, it's the city. It has nothing to do with the federal government, or the state government, or anything. Things got to change, because I am not investing another dime at the Clay Township if they can't protect my investment.
I understand, and like I say, if you can't build or grow 12-foot aridides, well, aridides within the required setback. So ask for a larger required.
No, that's not going to work. That, St. John's Drive has to be exempt from this. It has to be, because none of the properties are the same. They're all in line, but the water itself and the seawalls all changed. They had people on the ends got 35 feet, the other people on the end got 200 and some feet.
Right.
Now how are you going to sit there and say there's a 40-foot rule across from the seawalls?
You know, we're all smart people.
And the State of Michigan has nothing to do with it, from what I understand. I am not positive that that is true, because I didn't read the ordinance or what the State of Michigan put out, but I believe them.
Okay. I'm told that, you know, you're entitled to straight-ahead view. But you can disagree with me. I'm just, I'm just.
I'm going to have to leave Clay Township if that's the case, because you guys are not protecting my investment.
I'm telling you.
There's no resale value looking straight-ahead.
I'm telling you how to fix it, please. Okay, thank you. Any other public comments?
I'm Don Vanenbusch. I live at 10401. We bought five lots back here many years ago. And what they're doing right now is not right. We were never notified about this setback in 2012. You should have sent us a letter, because I talked to real estate people, and we had no letter, none of us. And you got somebody coming in here and do what they want, maybe because they have money, not right. So I know we got to go to the Planning Commission, and we will do that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, any other public comments? Real quick.
Again, Herman Hook at St. John Drive. It seems as though that this ordinance has really affected our street. And if there's, if there's an ordinance from this point forward that is affecting, not just our street, but any particular piece of property, notify the residents themselves. It's not that expensive to send a letter. You know what I mean? It's just not. And I mean, it's not. When you're, I mean, you know how this would have solved everything? Because we would have all been here before this even became an issue. You know what I mean? And if it's only, I mean, this ordinance is affecting 65 people. Isn't that right? 65 people or 65 homes?
Probably more than that.
Okay. Well, I don't know.
It's only on the North Channel, 65 homes. Only on the North Channel.
Well, it can't be, it can't be.
No, there's more streets than St. John's in the township that affects.
I was going to say, because it can't be just, it can't be just the North Channel, because I was in my boat this weekend. We went right along the North Channel. There's many homes that are much closer than 40 feet, and their landscaping's right up to the seawall. I mean, I don't know what this affects. I know it's affecting us a lot, you know, but I mean, you know, you go down, you know, you go down Colony, you know, for instance, landscaping comes, some of the houses come right out, right out to the dock.
They have a homeowners association with deed restrictions there, too.
See, again, law is that something that we're allowed to do?
If you form a homeowners association.
Maybe that's a solution.
Could be.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other public comments?
My name's Laura Lizowski, and I believe that the home Estelle is referring to is ours. But I just want to make it clear that it wasn't us that changed the ordinance or even tried. This happened a long time ago. This began in the courts. I don't know why.
It has to do with the ordinance.
This is public comments, please.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to clarify, and maybe you weren't speaking, that it was about us that came in and did that. I just wanted you guys to know, because I know there's a lot of upset, and I understand your guys' frustration, and I agree. Everybody's lots are different sizes, and maybe it shouldn't all be the same. I understand that. I just wanted to make that clear, because there's been a lot of anger directed at us lately, recently, and I just don't think that's right, because I didn't make the rule. I just wanted some privacy. I called the township, and I said, "What are the rules? What can I do?" And they told me what they were, and I followed the rules. So I just don't want, I think your anger's sort of misdirected, but I understand your frustrations.
Thank you. No, you, we're done. We're done.
I want to know what this means here with reports, check reports, assessing building code enforcement. You're part of the code enforcement.
These are department reports.
And we are not mad at Nick and Laura. We liked the house. It's just that when they took away our views, and then her father threatened us and told us, "I put up a fence. I block all your views." That I took personally. That was told to my husband while he was cutting the lawn. And then we had a barbecue for Father's Day. The grease goes on the grass. It's easier for it on the grass than to stain your patio that you spent a lot of money for. And then to be accused that we're trying to burn down her bushes.
Okay, thank you.
It got out of hand.
Thank you. I know it's emotional, but thanks for your comments. Okay, can I close public comments? All right, moving right along. Consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, including the minutes, board meeting, June 5, and synopsis, the following departmental reports, check reports, assessing building zoning code enforcement and police reports from May, the June Parks and Rec Updates Report, communication from the St. Clair County Road Commission, the resolution renaming Ainsworth Muskrat Run, the Road Watch Report of June 19, and there were no requests. Support.
We have support. Is everyone good with the consent agenda, or do we need to pull anything out or any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Do we forget?
Wait, you missed, you missed one. And there was a request for the deputy and the treasurer.
My, yep, my mistake. There's a request for the MTA Professional Development for Treasurer, Deputy Treasurer, $2.99 per person plus lodging, and new hire Tom McKay for the Police Reserves.
So you amended your motion?
I amended my motion.
Do we amend the support? Do we still have support?
Support.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, move right into the supervisor's report. Brace yourselves. Just like to report to the board that we did, we had a blight case that we won this past week in the Circuit Court. It was the property at the corner of Field and Stone. There was a lot of, it was mostly because of lots of piles of wood that commercial people were dropping off. And the court order, we give them a reasonable amount of time for them to remove the blight, and then if they don't, we can move it ourselves and charge the property owner the costs of actually doing that. And if they don't pay, of course, it goes back on their taxes. Merrill Street Bridge update. I did receive a notice they were changing the dates promised just because they had a setback due to DTE not completing in their underground for that bridge before they could start, and it pushed the contractor back. They are still saying that the bridge itself, the two lanes will be open by June 30. And there may be flagged traffic. In other words, a guy with a flag, you know, stop and go slow during the working hours. The total project will be done on or before July 21. The total project will be done on or before July 21st. But the actual construction, you know, they gotta finish the sides and everything. But it should be open two lanes by the end of June, so that's a good thing. And they are going very good. I stopped by there every couple days, and I was there today. They're actually switched onto the second lane now, if you haven't noticed. And on that, Anchor Bay Drive, which I've known about, has three bad bridges. And the St. Clair County Road Commission actually had a meeting here this past week and a half, and they escalated, actually, the worst bridge, I think, I can't remember if it's the second or the third one, has the least amount of weight on it. But all three of them has to be repaired, but you gotta repair the first one before you can repair the second one to repair the third one. It's like a plumber, you know, you gotta fix one leak, and the next leak. But they escalated the, amended their budget to escalate starting this project, and they are gonna start on the first bridge this fall sometime. So I don't have a date then, and it'll probably be the same thing, one lane open, then the other, you know, then they'll complete the other half on those bridges. So just wanna let everybody know that. Did have a town hall meeting that I put together last Thursday, and in attendance was the U.S. Coast Guard, Army Corps of Engineers, there was a whole bunch of other people. We had representation from Senator Gary Peters' office, and Debbie Sabanoff's office. Head of the St. Clair County Marine Division was there, Lieutenant Reed. Who am I missing that was there? The freighter people.
Freighter captains?
Yeah, we had, I had two, there's two freighter boat association, Lake Carriers Association and the Pilots Association were there. And then actually, I think, six freighter boat captains that represented freighter boat companies. They came from a long way. They came as far as Duluth, there's Buffalo, St. Catharines, Ontario. These guys came a long ways. What's that? Yep. Yep, seven, yep, both senators. And first, I know Chris was there, Joanne, and Cindy was there. And first, you know, we kinda educated the people with the Corps and the Coast Guard, and how it is. Right now, they have, the freighters, they have a 10.4 mile an hour speed limit on the river. And we educated them, showed them wash that, with the high water especially, that their boats are causing, and we showed them videos of waves just going right over docks. And it's a definite issue. And I tell you what, they were very, very accommodating. I talked to them the day after, and they agreed to send a memo out to all their boats to slow down in our area, basically from the head of Russell Island to the Cough Channel. And lo and behold, since Saturday, they've been going from 10, 10 and a half miles an hour down to 7 miles an hour, and their wash was very minimal, no damage since that meeting. So that was a definite, definite good thing. The second half of the meeting was dealing with pleasure crafts, waves, and wash, which everyone knows is an issue if you live along the water on St. John's Drive, right? And voiding the sheriffs on that, I was looking to get more money for enforcement. And I asked everybody from Homeland Security, FEMA, DNR, Senator Pavlov working on it, State Rep. Lowers working on it, have not found any money yet for more enforcement. But the St. Clair County Marine Division, they came, and quite honestly, he said, "I'm kinda embarrassed." I told them, "Bring their stats," you know, what they've done so far this year. They pulled over about 40 boats, and they written no tickets. And they, he actually apologized to us, and he said, "There's gonna be more enforcement, more ticket writing on that." And I still am looking for more enforcement, better enforcement on the water. Alls we can do is try. I originally went to the DNR, this is back three, four weeks ago, I had a meeting with them in Lansing, and there was people from NOAA and the Coast Guard. DNR said to enforce, and actually mark, to do all the markings and enforcement of this 200, 600-foot no-wake law, is 100% the county's responsibility. I'm asking for $40,000 more thousand for patrol boats. Not a whole lot of money in our area. They have a $60 million budget, and I sent an email off to the head of the county commissioners. You tell me you can't find 40 grand out of 60 million. But that's where it's at now, and continue to go on. But as a whole, I think that meeting was a success, and got the ball going, so. Oh, yeah, I just jotted down, we did have some problems with the splash pad this weekend. It's up and running now. We did have a couple sensors go bad, which we ordered and got in. And what's happening, too, in fact, I talked to them, this time of year, we get a lot of pollen and cottonwood. Everyone knows about the cottonwood. It's getting in the water, getting in the tanks, clogging everything up, and it's a big problem. So actually, we told the water department, who takes care of that, "We're gonna go on a, once every 10 days in this time of year in the spring, we're gonna drain that system completely, once every week or 10 days, pull all the stuff out." They did it today. It was, it was, yeah, it needed to be done. So get that
Water's gonna be cold now.
Yeah, so the water will be cold. So, and change that out. So my apologies, I know they are here all the weekend, you know, getting it going, that would run for a couple, three hours, and alarm would go off because of all that, basically, organic matter in there, it would change the pH, and the alarms will automatically turn it down and say, "Hey, there's something wrong with chemicals in the water," and there really isn't. So that was what was really causing it. We're re-enrolled, we don't have to do anything to get out of this program, we have to opt out, but I thought I'd share with the new trustees. It's called a fire insurance withholding program, it's through the state, and somewhere in my pack, I gave you a copy of the letter
On the back here.
On the back. And basically, what it is, if there's a home that has a fire, what has happened in the past, house, half of the house burns down, the owner of the house gets all the insurance money, and they don't touch the house, they walk away with all the money. And we're stuck with a house half burnt, and it's, becomes a dangerous building, and blight, and we have to tear it down, and it's a nightmare. But this program does, if they have insurance, the insurance is obligated company to hold back some money, and it would go to us to put in escrow as a percentage of the value of the house, and it can't go over $12,000. We can hold on to that money, and if that's what they do, we can take that money and use it to tear down the house. But if they get a building permit and start working on it, boom, we release the money to them. So that's a good program. It's actually helped us out a couple times, and I just wanna let the board know that we're still on that system. And for us to get out of it, I don't know why we would, we'd actually have to opt out. State Rep. Dan Lowers is holding office hours here at the Clay Township Hall, July 11th, at 11 o'clock till noon. The opening, our last weekend, we opened the Crispin, or the Crispin Kayaking Blue Trail. If you're not familiar, it was about two years ago, we did a big project that was put on, or funded by the Great Lakes GLR, Great Lakes Restoration Initiative, funded by the EPA. It was about a $4 million project, 3.8 million. And I'm proud of the project, it went well. It was a habitat restoration, basically to clean out this drainage, starts from the North Channel all the way through the middle of the island to the Middle Channel. And as a byproduct of that, we have a pretty good kayaking trail now. And we did a red ribbon, actually, it was a blue ribbon, it was a blue trail, cutting ceremony Saturday. Joanne, you were there, Mark was there. And I'm not sure, we probably had 60, 70 kayakers. Very few of them were actually from around here. They're all out-of-towners that never been on the island or anything before. And they kayak from the North Channel all the way through the middle of the channel, go to the middle of the island, out to Muskmoot Bay, paddle around there, and came back. We kinda coined it a day to play in the bay. And we have a map, I'm gonna do a little show and tell. Hunter, zoom in if you can. I know, it will be improvement. But this is the map of the trails. And you get in the DNR in this area, and there's loops you can do, and you can get in here, there's all kinds of places. You can get out in Muskmoot Bay, you can get out, cross in, do this loop, or in the Middle Channel. There's just a whole plethora of options. In this, the part that's colored, it's 11 miles of kayaking trails. And, you know, you go behind the Schoolhouse Grill, people can pull up there and go get something to eat, or whatever. And I'm excited about it, so it, we do have these available, these maps, and let us know. So there are, what's that? There's access places on the island, DNR sites to get in, and you can also park at the DNR launch here across the river, shoot straight across the river, you're in it. So, pretty cool. So it was fun. Everyone had a good time, and no one got ate by alligators or anything, so that's a plus.
Bonus.
Upcoming events. Starting our consumer educator, we did on Harrison's Island, Consumer Education Series this coming Tuesday, tomorrow, is at the Reader's Cove on the Island Identity Theft, it's called, and we're getting pretty good turnouts on that. We did the same series on the, in this office here, this, about five months ago. Let's see, what else we have going on? That starts at 7 o'clock tomorrow at Reader's Cove on the island. Music in the Park. June 22nd, these are in Algonquin. June 22nd, we have the High Balls, sponsored by Catch22. And July 6th, band called Under Pressure, sponsored by LaBelle Construction. I wanna give big thanks to ML Chartier and Grace Performers. They're the major sponsors of this program, and allow us to expand the series. I think July 19th, I'd have to look, it moves to Clay Township Park. But we have another meeting between now and then, and that's why it's not on here. But I've been having a great turnout, and it's a great event, it's one of my favorite things to do. Okay, June 25th is a 25-year anniversary of the Algonquin Clay Historical Society, and they're doing Log Cabin Days. That's a great event. They have all the log cabin, and then all kinds of stuff. The tractor people come, the antique tractors and stuff, and they have a really good strawberry sundae, ice cream sundae there, that's what I go for. So, telling you, Sunday the 25th, it's 25 years for them. July 22nd, Boats for Vets. At the idle hour, 9:30, if you have a boat you wanna donate and give a vet a ride, get ahold of me, I'll hook you up with them. Or if you're a vet that wants to go out for a nice boat ride for a day with somebody, get ahold of me, too, I'll hook you up with that. It's a, it's a pretty good event. Also, this coming weekend is Antique Boat Show at Algonquin Harbor Club. And I actually have some friends coming from, all the way from Fort Lauderdale, bringing their boat up for it. Okay, August 13th, we have Tigers versus Twin bus trip. Sunday 13th, leaves at 11 o'clock, $49 a person, 50 seats available, and it will sell out. Also, we're sponsoring a tennis, youth tennis team leagues, ages 5 through 14, Tuesdays and Thursdays, sorry, August 15th, and it goes through August 24th. Comes with t-shirt, racket, racket, racket ball, and goodie bags, $65 a kid for that program. I think that's about it for my report. So, thank you much. And moving right along, we have new business. First thing is Resolution 2017 to approve the 16, or the 2017-18 budget. Since it's my budget, I'm gonna make the motion. I move that we accept the Resolution 2017-21, setting the 2017-18 Clay Township annual budget.
Support.
We have motion and support. It feels weird saying that when I made the motion.
Do you wanna put the total?
Yeah, I was gonna say, the total of it is, for the, is whole township-wide, is If I recall, of all the budgets, with this budget, we're gonna put over 6, about $630,000 or $640,000 back into fund balance. So, we have motion and support?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? I know we went through it a few times, and I finally got the final numbers Thursday from our liability insurance company to plug in there, so. No more discussion, roll call vote, please.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
All right, next we have Resolution 2017-19, approve the trustees' salary. That, you're getting a little bit of a raise.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-19, the annual salary for Clay Township trustees, in the amount of, do you have it right there?
$37.70.
$37.70, with an additional $50 for any special meeting that is held on a night other than a regular meeting night.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
All right, next we have Resolution 2017-19, approve the trustees' salary. That, you're getting a little bit of a raise.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-19, the annual salary for Clay Township trustees, in the amount of, do you have it right there?
$37.70.
$37.70, with an additional $50 for any special meeting that is held on a night other than a regular meeting night.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any discussion? You guys are all quiet. Going with the flow.
Shuffling papers.
Okay. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Nobody likes to vote on their own thing.
I know.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
Yes.
All right, Resolution 2017-20, approve the deputy stipends.
Next we have Resolution 2017-19, approve the trustees' salary. That you're getting a little bit of a raise.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-19, the annual salary for Clay Township trustees, in the amount of, do you have it?
$37.70.
$37.70. With an additional $50 for any special meeting that is held on a night other than a regular meeting night.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufal?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Kufal?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufal?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Sandy Kufal?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Next we have Resolution 2017-23, approve stipend for FOIA coordinator.
I'll make a motion to approve the stipend for the FOIA coordinator, Resolution 2017-23, and also note that the amount should be $1,000.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufal?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, next we have a proposed letter for our Township Property and Liability Insurance Renewal. As you can read, the total price is, where is it? I lost it. I think it was $107,000. $107,065. It did go up about 5 and 5.6%, basically because of, of the property values have gone up, marine and, he says, reported increase in budget expenditures and standard property and land marine values updates. I wanted to educate the board a little bit. Three years ago, actually two years ago, we were probably paying about $112,000. And we went with this company and they, they, not only did we significantly reduce what we were paying, but we also expanded on, on the amounts of, of coverage because we were looking at a few things that just wasn't, we were uncomfortable with the values that were placed on it. And I don't think the Colony Tower was even on or old.
I was going to say, we were missing quite a bit.
We were missing things like the Colony Tower, which the township owns and a few other things, so. So I'm, I'm pretty happy with this company and the rates. I would suggest though, that next year we shop it again, you know, as every couple, three years, we do need to shop it.
For terrorism?
Yep. And this, this includes the terrorism rioter. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the property and liability renewal for $107.65.
Support. Okay, motion and support, any other discussion? We are $6 million per occurrence and we up that to, I think we're about $4 million. It's good coverage. Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufal?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next we have, it's basically a work order, it's through the Road Commission who manages our wastewater treatment plant. And every once in a while, we have someone that will dump a truck directly at the plant. And what happens when that happens, they bill us and then we bill the person. This is just revenue in, revenue, revenue out. And they're estimating it might be $4,000. And this is a work order, basically what we do with the Road Commission, allowing them to charge us up to $4,000. In all honesty, I think it'll be about $2,500, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the St. Clair County Road Commission estimate for, is that supposed to be septic removal?
Yeah.
Septage removal? Is that even a word? Septage?
Septage, yes.
Google that.
Okay, we have motion.
Support.
And support. And it's not to exceed $4,000, any, any discussion?
Yes, on, on this document that we have here in front of us, it's, there's no signature estimated by who, it's, there's parts missing.
Right.
And, and there's, nobody has signed anything.
Right.
But it'll be fixed up so we can.
Oh yeah, it'll be clerk and trust, or supervisor.
I have a big thing about that, saying okay to things that aren't, you know, but I know we have to approve it, so.
Yep. Okay, any more discussion? Roll call vote.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufal?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes. All right, motion carries. Next, not least, I'm recommending that we hire Sue Parcell as our Recording Secretary for the Planning Commission, planning and our ZBA Commission. She's actually done it before for the city of New Baltimore for a while, and now she actually is the, city of New Baltimore is our building clerk. And she actually stepped in a little trial last week at the Planning Commission, she did wonderful. And you can see her letter of introduction, and, come on up Sue. I got to embarrass you a little bit. How you doing?
Good.
Good, so this is Sue. Do you have any questions for her? And she's actually, is going to be the same rate as our old Recording Secretary was doing it for her, that had to leave us.
Former, former.
Former. Old, you're right, thank you. Almost got in trouble.
I'll make a motion to approve hiring Sue Parcell for our new Recording Secretary.
Support. Okay, motion and support, any questions? Any questions for Sue, or? She's currently with Chesterfield?
New Baltimore.
New Baltimore. Yeah. How long have you been with New Baltimore, Sue?
23 years.
23 years?
Yep.
Track record.
I know.
Okay.
Dooming is all, all the time, and I did planning and zoning for the first 10 years of my career as well as building, so I'm familiar.
And she'll, she'll be very welcome to both our ZBA and our Planning Commission.
Right.
For the minutes.
All right, anything else?
We've already met on the Planning Commission, so.
Thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone oppose, motion carries, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sue.
Yes. All right, we have Michigan Works contract approval. And what this is, we met with them last week. Michigan Works, they have a program that we could hire, or we could take advantage of. Actually, we would hire, but they make available people that, I'll say senior, but I fall in that category, I don't want to use senior, 55 and older, that, that can apply and be eligible for. The state of Michigan pays 100% of their wages and salary, and we get them to, to use them for no cost to the township. And it's good for 19 hours a week. We can keep the same person because of our location and stuff, they were saying maybe up to four years. And we, we needed board approval for me to sign this, and we are going to be looking for someone to do light maintenance between this building and the police building around here, like 19 hours a week. And also someone clerical to help at the fire department. So that's, that's what we're thinking of right off the bat. But to get the ball rolling, we have to sign this agreement, and that's why it's before you.
What was the compensation on that?
Uh, $8.90 an hour.
Pay minimum wage, basically.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we accept and sign the Michigan Works contract for McComb-St. Clair Workforce Senior Community Service Employment Program.
Okay, we have motion and support, any more discussion?
We checked that these positions are covered under liability insurance.
They're completely covered under the unemployment office.
Their, their insurance, not ours.
Liability.
So it comes no cost to us.
So this $8.90, is that the billing rate to the Michigan Works, or is that the compensation for?
That's what they make.
Okay, what's the billing rate? Is there a billing rate to the Michigan Works?
No, we don't get billed.
Okay. Good enough, I support.
Yeah, no cost to us. I know a few, it's, it's offered through municipalities and certain nonprofits. Port Iron Township Fire Department has someone, and it's worked out great with, for them. That's where we got the idea and they hooked us up with it. So, anything else on this?
Okay.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next we have Police Department purchase, four sets of tires. Four sets of four? Four sets of four tires.
So 16 tires. That's, that's right.
And this, we really, we're buying this through the state of Michigan. The state, what the state of Michigan does, they put certain things out for bid statewide that we can kind of pony up on. And so it, it falls on her, we don't have to go out and get bids because nothing's going to beat this bid for one thing. And it's already been done through the state of Michigan, so. That's why Mike doesn't have to go out and get three quotes and, because they would probably buy these tires for the amount that we're buying them from. So.
Yeah, that's the excellent price. Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we support the Police Department by purchasing four sets of tires in the amount of $1,974.88, coming out of line item 207, period 000, period 931, period 00.
Support.
Motion and support, is that this year's budget or next year's budget?
This year's.
This year's, okay, just wanted to make sure. Motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next we have Fire Department, new hires. Chief, want to get up and introduce the people?
Sure. Good evening. I'm requesting permission from the board to bring on these street personnel, they have many years of experience in the township. I have Ed Voight, Beverly Rose, and Denise Markowski. Ed has had, he's a past Assistant Chief with the department, he has firefighter one and two, and he's had, he has officer one, two, and three. Bev has fire officer one, firefighter one and two. And Denise, she has fire officer, or excuse me, firefighter one, firefighter two, and she's a basic AMT certification. And they would be an asset to the department. They are residents of the area, longtime residents of the area.
Are these replacement officers?
Well, they're not officers, they'd be firefighters.
Firefighters, or, or, excuse me, replacement firefighters?
Well, we do have some that have left, but I'm trying to build the force.
Okay, fair enough. Good addition.
I'll make a motion that we accept the chief's recommendation for new hires, Ed Voight, Denise.
Marsinkowski.
I'm glad you're making this motion.
I know, right?
I'm so happy.
I'm like, this is going to be bad. And Bev Rose?
Support, okay.
All right, we have motion, do we have support?
Yes, Mark.
Okay, we got all kinds of support. Any questions for anybody or anything?
Negative.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Tough. Congratulations, motion passes.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, last center under new business is Principles of Governance. We've done this, this is the third time, it's recommended by the MTA, and I think this is a wonderful document.
Read it.
Hmm?
Read it.
You want to read it?
You want me to read it?
Yeah.
Sure.
Go ahead, read it, Joanne. I'm tired of listening to myself.
Clay Township Principles of Governance. To maintain the highest standards and traditions of Michigan townships, we embrace these principles to guide our stewardship, deliberations, and constituent services as we commit to safeguard our community's health, safety, and general welfare. We pledge to insist on the highest standards of ethical conduct by all who act on behalf of this township. Bring credit, honor, and dignity to our public offices through collegial board deliberations and diligent, appropriate responses to constituents' concerns. Actively pursue education and knowledge and embrace best practices. Treat all persons with dignity, respect, and impartiality without prejudice or discrimination. Practice openness and transparency in our decisions and actions. Cooperate in all reasonable ways with other governmental entities and consider the impact our decisions may have outside our township's borders. Communicate to the public township's issues, challenges, and successes, and welcome the active involvement of stakeholders to the future of the township's well-being. Strive for compliance with all state and federal statutory requirements. Refuse to participate in any decisions or activities for personal gain at the expense of the best interests of the township. Further the understanding of the obligations and responsibilities of American citizenship, democratic government, and freedom. These principles we pledge to our township, our state, and our country.
Great.
Would you like to make that motion, Joanne?
So I would like to motion, make the motion that we adopt these Principles of Governance, Governance for Clay Township.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any more discussion? I think we should tweak this and give it to our other boards too.
Yes.
Planning and ZBA for them to look at and hopefully adopt too, so.
It's a big order, but we have to strive to fill it.
That's right. All right, roll call vote please.
Kristy Hilton? Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufal?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, now we're all the way down to Board Member Comments. Mark, do you have any Board Member comments for us?
I believe on the Planning Commission, we're going to have a public hearing, I believe it's July 12th, on Automobile Service Stations, and removing the verbiage, the sale of alcoholic beverages that expressly prohibit it. So we're going to remove that from the ordinance. So we're going to remove that from the ordinance, and again, the public hearing, I believe, is July 12th.
The planning commission will vote on it. Yes, yes. Joanne?
As a representative of the ZBA, in case you don't know that I am, I'm liaison person between the ZBA and the township board. We will be having a board meeting on Wednesday, this coming Wednesday. We have three setback issues to take care of. That's about all I have right now.
All right. Well, I'd like to welcome all of our new members tonight, looking forward to working with all of you. And I would like to remind all of our voters out there of the no wake areas, very annoyed over the weekend, hoping the sheriff comes down here and starts addressing that issue because it's getting a little bit crazy out there, lots of boats.
I'll, I'll get with that in a second. This is board member comments right now.
All right.
Okay.
I do not have anything this evening.
Oh, my God.
Sorry.
You feeling okay?
Yeah.
Okay, good. How about you, Chris?
Well, in, in looking at the, the reports that the different departments develop, I see the building permits are just, every month, they're just, they're, they're going and going and going, and I, I appreciate the, the support for our community and the new developments, and we're your eyes and ears up here, you know, and we need input so we can direct traffic and, and make good policy based on public concerns. The island meeting, I wanted to thank the Lions Club for that, for the high water meeting, and it was a spectacular turnout, and it's a big hall, and, and it was set up well, but 10 minutes before the meeting, they're in the closet pulling out chairs, because that's the kind of support that the island comes together and gives. I would love to see a little more support in our meetings. It seems that the only time we get support is when people are fairly upset. So, so.
I don't think they call that support, though.
It's just a plea, maybe it's a request, but yeah, I thought the islanders handled the meeting extremely well. I, I thought it was a great meeting, and it was some, some valid discussion, some pointed discussion directed at the Great Lakes carriers and the ship captains, and, and I appreciate it being part of that.
Yeah, thank you.
Would like to invite everyone to a fundraiser for Elginak Wrestling Association. Rock the mats at Decker's Landing on June 22nd. Doors open at 6:00 PM. It's a $10 donation, adults only, and I would like to see our community support our wrestling program.
Thank you. Our wrestlers did phenomenal, Joanne, were they third in the state or?
We were sixth in the state at one point, but we did win districts.
Yes, I mean, they did a phenomenal job this year, and another fun event, what we're going to do with them in the park, I'll announce it when it gets closer, I think it's July 22nd, but we're going to take the volleyball nets down, and we're going to have two wrestling pits for these guys in the sand, and they're going to do wrestling in the sand in the park one day, in the afternoon, so that's going to be.
Our wrestlers?
Our wrestlers.
Really?
Yeah.
I brought some pads for the bulls.
And they're looking for volunteers. Mark, you interested? No, so.
Hey, I just.
Yeah, put man spandexes and a mask. I got them.
I'd like to see them in a singlet.
So, but that's going to be a lot of fun.
Thanks for that, chief.
Is Kristi done with her comments?
Are you done?
I am done.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just want to bounce off, too. I mean, we've got a lot of positive, we do have a lot of positive things going on in the township, you know. I think it's great that we're, we're getting the road to the high school renamed to Muskrat Run. Yeah, that's official, and that's going to instill some pride and, and stuff in our community and our school. The opening of the St., or the Crispin Drain, the Blue Ways Trail, you know, that's a phenomenal thing, and people don't realize that the DNR game refuge on the, in the middle of Arson's Island before, it was totally off limits, and truthfully, four years ago, I tried to work with the DNR, the management back then, to open it up during non-hunting seasons. They laughed at us, and, you know, we got new people involved with the DNR, and not only do they open up these dikes to our, to the public, they open them up even in the middle of the game refuge where before, nobody could go anytime. But you're, we're free to go back there from January 1st all the way up to August 31st, non-duck hunting seasons. Duck hunters paid for it, but I'm, I'm going to try to really market that next year. It's beautiful back there, and the, the birds, the Audubon people are going to go nuts. There's, there's rare, these black terns, are they? There's sandhill cranes, there's just an amazing amount of wildlife back there, and you see, especially this time of year, they got their little ones running around and everything. We even have beaver back there now, and they said, what, we have otters. Otters. Otters in the area, too. But it's, it's, it's a really great asset that, you know, hopefully we'll be able to take more, more advantage of.
Over if you're walking in, it is tick season right now.
It is tick season right now, but.
That's appropriate.
It's.
But it is beautiful.
I don't think the ticks would be too much trouble there because there's no tall grass on the dikes.
Right.
And you can't go.
But one thing I want to work on back there, too, is, I mean, what is there, like 25 miles of dikes back there?
Oh, at least.
At least, maybe more. I want, we're, we're going to try to get a 10K duck dash, an actual running event on the dikes back there, and it'll be a phenomenal place for us to run it on the road. These guys, they get their, their knees pounded and everything on a, a two-track back there. It'll be, it'll be pretty cool. I don't know, I'm just, you know, we had a great meeting last Thursday with the freighter guys. I am totally amazed that they slowed down their boats down by them on their own accord.
That is impressive, I will say that. I mean, that, that was the last result that I thought would come out of that meeting, and it was absolutely wonderful that they all stepped up for that.
Right, and the, the tennis we got, it was, you know, we had two, two senators represented, we had, I mean, we just had the core of engineers, the coast guard, I mean, everyone was there, DNR, and it's, you know, it was, hey, three weeks ago, we need some help, and they all showed up, so that was, that was pretty cool. This Friday, we got another unsanctioned event, Joby Noonar, which I'm sure the two chiefs there are praying that it rains really hard that day, but, you know, we've been doing a lot of work on that. We just have a lot of positive stuff going on, and I'm really, I'm proud of it, or I'm glad for it. It's a great place to live.
If I can just make a, a comment about the DNR's refuge down there. If you, you get a chance to take a ride over there, and walk down those dikes and look out there, and it's quiet, and like Artie says, all the birds and, it's a sight to see. It's really something to see. It's beautiful. Cindy's, Cindy's been.
They are going to be doing an open house here. Can't remember when, I know it's towards the end of the summer, so.
Very peaceful.
I'll let everybody know, but, I mean, we just got a lot of stuff, positive stuff going on in the community, and I want to thank everyone for coming, too. So what was your, where, where did you say those two buoys were?
I think the Elginak buoys.
They're out here.
In Elginak?
Yeah.
Yeah, Elginak, right. What's going on there, they're actually trying to get that passed as a permanent no wake. The city of Elginak is, and they, they passed, I think it was their last meeting, resolution to turn into that. They sent it to the DNR, and now the DNR is going to say yea or nay or however to do It's not a no wake zone, but the same rules still apply to 200, 600, you know, if you're 27 foot or larger, you got, you have to be, well, I want it so everybody else does. If, if you're 26 foot or larger, you have to be 600 feet away from shore or dock. You got to be 600 feet away from a dock for, to, otherwise it's no wake. If you're under that, it's got to be 200 feet.
I think that's maybe where some confusion comes in. People don't realize that when the docks come out 200 feet, that starts at the end of the dock.
Right.
Into the channel.
Right. We had a lot of that kind of discussion going on last Thursday night. It was a, it was a really good meeting.
So are those on the charts or in?
No. They're, well, they're not, actually, they got a permit to put those up through the sheriff, but they're not enforceable as of yet.
Why would they be a nuisance at early midnight?
Well.
Are they lit?
No. Are they not? Yeah, they should be lit.
They should be lit.
They should be lit.
Of course, you know, that North Channel one isn't lit either.
Yeah. They're not much more, they can put a little solar receptor on it. No, they should be, but.
You got a lot of night freshmen out there in the, in the river.
I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll forward that to the DNR because I'm sure I'm going to get a letter.
They don't bother me, I'm just saying.
Right.
It's really the technicality.
Well.
It's all coming down everywhere, it's that thing with your boat.
Yeah.
And it's not supposed to be there, and it's not on the charts.
Right, I'm out in the boat all the time at night, and, and, you know, I, I don't want to slam dunk it either.
Spray it with glow in the dark paint.
Yeah, but.
Are they, are they rubber or?
They're rubber.
If there's something else, they're technically designated as a no wake.
Mm-hmm, that's what they're, that's the goal of the city of Elginak. The goal of City of Elginak is to make that no wake from the Harbor Club up past, I'm not sure where, up past their park, past Russell, their park, so, but I think that's all I have to say right now.
You want to throw something off in your army? I didn't want to get up on camera, but.
But you're on camera right now.
Okay, I pre-punch that period on, like this.
Yeah.
Four, five times a week. All those benches are getting loose, bolts are all loose, you know, that's not my rule. I'm maybe issued, the number of people that use that for late at night, the residents of this town that are out there fishing illegally, smoking pot, carrying weapons, lighting your barbecue grills on top of wooden benches and burning.
Wow.
Big boats coming in there, and instead of tying the piling, they're tying it to the railings, and that tears the railings just fall out of the, out of the pier. There needs to be some signage up there to tie the piling, it's only, you know, tie.
There was some, but.
There's enough, there is no sign.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll address that pier. We'll, we'll start doing some.
We have already started.
You started doing some patrols?
Yeah, we have some things brought to our attention, I witnessed it myself, too, so our guys are making it more frequent stops down there, checking it out when they see people out there. I brought it up this week with the police department, but there needs to be some signage because the owners are, you know, you get a 35, 40.
And there's piling right next to the rails.
Right.
In fact, we put some cleats up down there, too.
I didn't see any cleats.
I think that was the things to do.
All those benches are loose, and I, me and my friends used to go up there with a wrench and a socket, right now, it's not my job.
Right, yeah, okay, I appreciate that.
I've heard that report before about the loose, loose bolts, so it is an issue.
Yeah.
There's crazy stuff goes on out there.
Yeah, you know, we have electricity out there, I wonder what we'd have to do to get a camera out there.
Well, it's easy to take care of it, can't explain.
I think that'd be a, a great addition. DNR would like it, too, especially when they're pulling those undersides.
If we had the recording there somehow in a lock case.
Yeah, we can look into that.
Yeah, we'll look at getting a, a security camera out there.
One on the, two, before you get out of dock, where the signs are, if there's nothing in them, and the power panel's at, the concrete, the dirt underneath the concrete will wash away, somebody's going to step off into that hole, last thing you're going to have.
Okay.
The pier needs a little maintenance.
Yeah, it does.
We need to send the water department down there to take a look.
Yeah, we will. And just to, down at the pier, we're, we're actually going to be getting a informational sign by the sturgeon for tomorrow on sturgeon fishing, because, you know, I've been, I've seen a lot of fishing piers where nobody catches fish. Ours, you catch fish, and that's why he's out there.
There's a hole right out in front of that.
Yeah, I mean, it's great fishing, and, and they're a great spot for sturians, so, and we have a phase two of that. In fact, right behind you, above the light switch, is a picture of what we want to do with the parking lot in phase two of that, and I want to get, it'll probably be a DDA, or, or, following our DDA, that's who rebuilt the, the pier three years ago, that, and that, oh, yeah, well, we got a grant, we worked hard on that, and it worked out well. And that's going to be phase two, put some parking on and a little bit more landscaping and stuff, and, so, yeah, it's, it's definitely an asset, so, and maybe we'll put a handicap kayak launch there, too. Yep. I know they used to tie up to the swimming ladders, and they pulled them off, but I got some really good swimming ladders now. So, all right, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Support, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming, everybody.